If we could, let's give a moment of silence and reflection, please. All right, thank you very much, and I'm sure all of you are keeping all those people across the big pond that are under Mr. Putin's attack. Please keep them in your prayers, as well as those of us paying the gas bills that we're unaccustomed to right now. A lot of things going on in this world, so let's pray for each other and help one another. For those of you that may not be familiar with our availability of documents for this meeting, our minutes and our agenda and so forth are available on the back table. And help yourself. And the second item on the agenda is to call to order and welcome everybody, and thank you all for being here. And the third item is pledge allegiance to the flag, which is to my right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fourth item is a consideration of approving the agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one motion, please. I'd like to add to the closed session this evening, executive session this season, this evening, to a discussion on the acquisition of real property.
Madam Clerk, do you have any issues with that?
No, sir.
And I have, I have an addition, making it 9F, discussion and action on town communication plan, and items to be produced for the paid parking rollout.
Okay, we didn't get a second.
Oh, sir.
Okay, we can, uh...
I'm trying to do both at once.
All right. Consensus of the board, vote on both at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Both items added to the agenda, and where would we like to add those?
9F.
9F.
The others in the executive session.
9F.
That idea was in the executive session, sir.
All right. Everybody know where we are? Everybody in the audience understand where we are? Okay. So, are we ready to move on to number five, approval of minutes? Is there a motion to approve January 26th and February 15 minutes as presented?
Both should approve.
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Smith, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. It's unanimous. We're on number six, public comments. We have no one that has signed up for public comments. Later on, on the agenda, you can speak to anything you want, but this was a time for anybody who wanted to speak to any items specifically on the agenda. Having none to address us, we'll move on to number seven. And that's good news. And Ms. Hewitt, do you want to say anything about that before we make this presentation?
No, sir, but you're gonna have to get up front and let us take some pictures of you and Mr. Evans as the planning director.
Do we have anybody else here from your department, sir, or anybody within that?
Yeah. He's a... Tim's a one-man circus anyway, so it should be all...
Not for the brains, or to hear, but I don't see anyone.
Big getty one of them.
All of you may recall that I sent out an email, uh, town-wide about not so good, talking about expecting the insurance rates, the town holding these flood insurance rates, maybe we're looking like a 15 percent, uh, dis率. And that's primarily due to Mr. Evans, who's staff, uh, dealing with pursuing this, and it is a very difficult thing to get. And I know I'm watching so many others, I get frustrated trying to adhere to the rules, but with the town enforcing the rules is paying off for us getting this discount. But keep in mind, that adherence to the rule gives us a reduced rate, and that's what we're struggling with out today. And to give you one example, one of my bosses went $28,000 a year to $8,000 a year. Thank you. All right.
I can't take any credit for that.
Good work, Rob.
Thank you so much. Police report. Chief, thanks for all that you do.
Yes, sir.
And as you come to the podium, I've got some information about a stolen car I got to give to you.
Uh-uh. That doesn't sound good.
No. Not on the island, but off the island.
Okay, all right. So, last month, I did not have a printed police report, as I said, we were transitioning. So, what you see in front of you now is the new police reports. This is, it's integrated with the CAD system, so it's directly from dispatch and the calls that we answer. And so, there's, there's no relaying with our RMS system and trying to get information from the dispatchers, it's all in one system now. We had 517 calls last month. You can see a breakdown of what those calls were, and what you see here is probably quite a bit more detailed than what you're used to seeing in the old reports, but that's because that information is relayed directly from them. If you have questions about a certain type of call, I will try to answer it for you. If not, we'll move on to the next page behind it, which actually talks about some of the reports. After that, on the next page is our monthly report for incident reports. Not every call that we go to, we do an incident report. You know, if it's, we go to, take any, a sick person call, you know, we go down there, we respond, we assist as needed, but we don't do a full incident report on. We do a full incident report if there's a crime and needs an incident reporting investigation. That monthly report, we've actually gone back and, and gotten caught up from the very first of the year, so it's from January and February, two months there. And those are all the incident reports that we've taken over the last two months. And if you have any questions on those, I'll be glad to try to answer them if I can.
Jeremy, I just have one question. There were several lines in here that said investigator requested. What does, what does that, what does that mean, Jeremy?
Okay, so when we go in and put the report, there's, everything in this system is click boxes and dropdowns. Of course, you've got your narrative and type in sections, but your disposition is a, is a dropdown box in there. And you have dispositions, like the very first one is closed unfounded. What that means is, is not that, how do I explain unfounded? Unfounded means a crime did not occur, is what it means. So, it means we responded and took a report for a crime, and we determined that a crime did not occur. So, like on this one, it was larceny by employee, and I actually read it because I figured that may come up. They thought the employee stole something. When they went back and looked, the employee actually did not steal anything, so it was unfounded, even though it was a crime that was reported, so it was unfounded. You got closed, cleared, cleared by arrest. That's, you know, pretty, pretty simple there. You got another closed unfounded, but the investigator requested means that it's still open, and we don't have anybody that's currently looking at that case right now. You have some down there that are further investigation, that means an officer is actively looking into that case. And if it says investigator requested, it means it has not been opened up for investigation yet. It needs investigation, as you see, but we just don't have, honestly, anybody right now that's looking into that particular case. There's one case, I don't remember where it's at, it's on the bottom of that first page, where it was forwarded to another agency. That was obtaining property by false pretense. We had a, without going into too much detail, we had an obtaining property case, a gentleman was frauded out of a significant amount of money, and we actually forwarded that to the U.S. Secret Service. So, that's, that's what it says, forwarded to another agency. We, we tried to find those resources where we can, and that one was significant enough that the Secret Service was willing to help us out with it. But, but that's kind of the disposition goes on those, and...
I see there's a couple of breaking and entering's. Is that, is that something that is...
Yes, we, we have had a couple of breaking and entering cases. I cannot remember anything specific about them that was out of the way, other than, you know, they're, they're breaking and entering, and honestly, we, we just have not had the resources or time or manpower to look into them.
That's where we need a detective.
We do, we do. That's a budget conversation, I won't get into all that, so...
Don't need to, I guess, that was the question I wanted you to answer.
Yes, yes, sir, we do, we have several cases that do need investigating.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. That's, that's what I have on the police report, and like I said, any more questions, comments, concerns, glad to try to answer.
Good job, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Hewitt, number nine?
Yes, sir. I've got a memo prepared in your package that attempts to address several of the items A through E on the agenda, the first of which is delineation and deconflicting of parking spaces. We're assuming that the draft ordinance is pretty close to being refined enough to consider for adoption tonight. Based on that, I'd like to have the, or be provided the opportunity to have the police department and Public Works ground truth that by marking all the locations where parking is proposed to incur for both on-street and off-street categories, and marking the spaces thusly will allow public safety officials to realistically test and evaluate the distances from intersections and parking locations, providing sufficient turning access in addition to allowing other large public services and recreation vehicle towing combinations to gauge the effect of the new reduced intersection spacing. And we're gonna talk about some of the things that we've already done, or I'm a lateral to Jeremy here in just a second. The signage, you've got templates and content examples in your package for review and approval if necessary. Budget amendment is included also to accommodate the funding streams for both on and off-street parking in accordance with the Physical Control Act and the on and off-street parking law regarding use of the same revenues. The budget amendment represents estimates for the last 90 days of the current fiscal year, and funds generated will primarily be used for signage and any site work required for implementation. The general fund will house the program with expenses being made from the streets department. Both the sign templates and the budget amendment will require board approval before signs can be ordered. To the implementation date, advertising and consideration of no-pay days, that has been mentioned here during discussions, first, recommend that the board consider a soft start date of paid parking, one May for 2022, for several reasons, the following of which are certainly not all-inclusive. We don't know how long it's gonna take, delivery times for signage and delivery. We're uncertain as to how long it's gonna take for the Davis Street property out here at the corner, believed to be minimal, but it will be required. We've got Easter week coming up, beginning the 10th of April through the 17th, and a large influx of visitors is probably not the best time to test a new system, to roll it out. Believe the extra month would be better utilized to advertise the beginning of the paid parking program via a large digital sign at the foot of the bridge, among other things to be determined. In our communications plan, I believe we're gonna talk about an item E, it'll be critically important to be able to standardize and communicate the program specifics through various town media messaging platforms. Additionally, dates at the docks is the 23rd and 24th of April, and it's gonna locate vendors all, all up in the various paid parking areas. There's enough activity associated with this event that it's believed it'd be cleaner to not complicate the paid parking program issue further until the board decides on a protocol and schedule of a no-pay or reduce-pay days and schedule, which can be determined at a later date. Lastly, action, follow-on action regarding the ask of the General Assembly. It's suggested, and, and we're gonna have to do that, the town of Holden Beach seek legislation from the General Assembly essentially waiving the constraints imposed by General Statute 160A, 3, 160A, 301A relating to the use of on-street parking revenues, similar to the flexibility afforded to the several towns in New Hanover County through their enabling legislation that allows for use of all paid parking revenues for any public purpose. We checked with the League of Municipalities, who gives us feedback that indicates that the bill filing deadlines for local bills have not been determined yet, but the best guess is mid-April or mid-May. The League suggests that now is the appropriate time to reach out to the town's local delegation to educate them on the need and request that they have legislative staff draft the bill if the town is ready to proceed in that direction. So, as, at, at the, at the desire of the board, any of those action items can be discussed. I know that one of the, one of the specifics regarding the ordinance, we did get clarification from the Wildlife Resources Commission, I'll pass this down. It pretty much delineates the, uh, the wildlife boat ramp, and that will necessitate a deletion of Area 46, I believe, and Area 46.5 in the ordinance. Additionally, Chief, Chief Dixon got with the Fire Department, and they did some actual runs with the, the big ladder truck to see what, what kind of problems we might run into by having to see the turn, turning radiuses and that kind of thing. And I believe that what he has discovered, it will necessitate amending the 25-foot distance to 40 feet from the intersection right-of-way in the ordinance, and he can talk to that more specifically, but those are, are two of the specific changes. We don't think that it will materially change the ordinance in, in the context of the types, the numbers, and spaces location, but those are two of the specifics that came up. Jeremy, that's your hand. Excuse me.
So, we, we have been working with the Fire Department, and we actually brought the ladder truck over here the other day and spent all afternoon going through intersections. We haven't hit them all yet, but what we have figured out is on a vast majority of them. We, we went down and put flags out, and at 25 foot, if a car had been sitting where the flag was at, the fire truck would have hit it. They had to push it out of the way, something. So, the 25 foot's gonna be too, too far. What we have figured out is measuring it, is the truck, the ladder truck's 42 foot. For it to clear and make the turn, it needs about 38 foot from the right-of-way. The Fire Department kind of suggested that we just round to 40 foot, give them just plenty of clearance. That's, that's on you, just, just bringing that back to you, but, but 25 is, is gonna be too tight on them, and it takes their ladder trucks more room than that to turn, so that's, that's where we're at with that. They also identified two other areas of concern that they asked me to bring to your attention. Dunescape right now is listed as parking on both sides. The way those fire hydrants are situated down there, and the way they have to enter Dunescape Drive to get to the dirt section of Ocean Boulevard East there, they would actually prefer to leave the eastern side as no parking and move parking to the west side only. That way, they have plenty of room, because you know it goes into that turn where the steps are at, and it gets kind of tight in there. And if they can eliminate parking on the, on the eastern side, then they can make that turn without any, any issues whatsoever.
What number of parking spots were those on the...
Those, those are on, before I lie to you, somewhere towards the back.
Is that H-68?
68, that is correct. Dunescape Drive, where it's both sides of the street, they, they would prefer for it to be west side only. West side only is, is their preference for getting fire trucks and fire braves to it.
So, two on the west?
Correct. And then the other thing that they brought to our attention is the current signage in front of the fire station two down here at 574, Ocean Boulevard West, where they're located. The current signage has, has no parking basically in front of their, adjacent to the property. And right now, if you read it, it just says 25 foot from the intersection, so it would open parking up to be in front of their fire station, and trying to swing those trucks in and out of there, getting in and out of the bays could be an issue. So, they've requested that we look at potentially moving that back past their fire station. Haven't been down there and measured any distances, I don't know, but even moving it from 25 to 40 is not gonna clear their building from...
There's, there's two there now that are past the firehouse.
Yes, yes, they're, they're past the firehouse, that is correct.
That's the two that everybody's been using on that canal.
Correct. And they're, they're not saying they need to go away, they're just saying they don't need to move up to...
Move forward, right.
Correct. So, so I don't know what the footage is on that, but they did want me to bring that to your attention as well.
Okay.
So, that's, that's all the issues that we found so far.
That's, um...
Jeremy, there was a sun mentioned as needing to locate a couple more handicap parking spaces, and I think that there could be a couple added on Jordan Boulevard as well as on the east end.
You guys made a recommend, we had an email, I believe, that pointed out...
Yes, I'm trying to remember that email, Jeremy. There was, I think there was a few identified home, or was it? Frank may know more than I do on that.
I counted 13 today. I went out because I anticipated this. I counted, there's two at Jordan, two at the east end, and nine in the, forgive me, lot on Oceanfront there, adjacent Quentin. And, and I agree, the spaces on the east end are inadequate for the usage that we commonly see. That is the number one place historically we write handicap tickets. You know, you, you could increase four or five down there, and maybe four to five on Jordan Boulevard. So, and I also checked the bathhouse under the bridge, there's not one there. That might be a possibility. Couldn't really come up with anything any further west, and I apologize, I did not count the one or two at pump station three.
Pump station, yeah.
Two.
So, that would get you to the percentage.
Well, I, I fully agree that we should put more at the east end, because that is a very heavily used area. You know, I thought about that before, making it four or five, because there are so many people there. And if there's, if there's room by, if there's room for two more on Jordan Boulevard and put one at the, at the rest, the existing restroom facility, that just seems to be a good compromise to get, to get to where we need to be right now.
The one discussion Chief and I had yesterday about Jordan Boulevard is the angle of the asphalt where they're currently at. That might need to be something, that might need a little investigation before the signs were actually placed, because it's a slope.
It is pretty slope, yeah.
You put a wheelchair-accessible ramp in there and put a wheelchair out, and they roll down into traffic.
If you have, and you have, I can hold up, number is, just forever handicap parking place that you have, a certain percentage of those has to be van-accessible. And so, you have to keep in mind that when you start talking about numbers, the average used to be one in every 20, and I think it went to one in every 25, but I'd have to check under A117. But those van-accessible parking places can also count for the handicap number. In other words, it can be both, but you do have to have the van-accessible percentage right.
Is that something we can handle internally?
Yes.
With the PD and Jim, make sure we get that done. Thank you for y'all, thank you, Frank.
Jeremy.
Yes.
One thing, Section H-57 and H-58, yeah, there's flip-flop. So, it should be three on Elizabeth and eight on Ranger.
Can I look at a picture?
Cause Ranger...
I may have flip-flopped it, I just wanted...
Yeah, Ranger is the one that already has the little things on that one side, and there's eight there.
They actually, if you look at the signage, there's parking on both sides on both streets.
Mm-hmm. They got, on Ranger Street, they have the bikes and the wagon corral on the left side, which would be the east side.
So, you're wanting, you want Elizabeth Street to be west side only?
Right.
Okay.
But you got a flip-flop, there's only three on Elizabeth now, and there's eight on Ranger now.
Okay. So, they would, so Elizabeth would go to west side only and three.
Mm-hmm. And Ranger's the eight.
Ranger would go to both sides and eight.
No, just the, the west side eight. The left side is the bikes and the corral. That's what's currently there now.
Currently parking on both sides now.
Huh?
There's currently parking on both sides now.
All right, I just know there's eight spots.
I mean, I'm, I'll do it anyway, I'm just asking...
No, it's just flip-flop, I think.
Okay, so, so it should be Ranger, both, both sides at eight. Elizabeth should be west side only...
Right, he's got a flip-flop.
At three, okay.
And then, just to go back to the starfish one more time, the current lights there, one's on the east side, one's on the west side. Where the fire station is, where they're talking about?
Uh-huh.
One's on, one's on the east side, one's on the west side, the two current spots that they're using now. Cause talking about the firehouse, there's not the room to put two...
Two, right.
On the same side of the street.
Okay.
So, currently what they're using is one on the east side and one on the west side.
Okay, all right. So, that needs to go to both sides of the street instead of...
Right, one on each side. Thanks.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Did you say cars or...
Vehicles.
Okay.
So, I've just, I've just confirmed with the clerk that those, she's able to capture those changes to include an effective date of one May, should the board be so inclined.
Right, so...
And, and I, I don't know if you wanna do them one at a time, or if you wanna just go through it and then do them all at a time.
That was a question I was giving, did you wanna do these one at a time, David, or a motion for the hold? Mr. Mayor?
Close to the board. It all goes together. Just looking to hear a motion. If you don't have one, we're gonna move on.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the paid parking ordinances, service agreement with auto-connect, the sign templates. I believe Jim has some that have a little less, a little less crowded. The budget amendment, 22-04, the town's staff to request enabling legislation from the General Assembly, 168-301A. And I think that covers all of it, correct, David?
Star date.
Mayor first. Do you wanna see the sign templates? Do you have those with you? I mean, I know they're in the thing, but I'm, they have it.
This is the exact size of the sign that we had in the package. This is the, um, exact size of the sign, uh, that we had in the package. Typically, once we get to closure, we take these to our graphic artist and have them review them. We did that earlier, uh, this time around, and came up with one that is a little simpler, it's not as busy. But it has all the same content. So we are very, but this is what the signs will look like.
Sorry, you say?
This is what the update would look like instead, which is much simpler.
Good.
Madam Clerk has a couple of extra copies of the new version that we just released today.
So basically, we're not going to have any vehicle and trailer because those spaces are wildlife and they will not be included.
I understand that, yes.
Okay, I just-
That was part of the template package that I had prior to, prior to knowing that-
We, we're gonna need clarification on that. We can't park boat, boat and trailer in the wildlife area, but the, um, I mean, this weekend, they were parked all, all up and down South Shore Drive.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Yeah.
You can't designate, this is not gonna, this is, this was going to be for wildlife where it was specifically for vehicle and trailer. And we do not have any other areas in this table that talk about vehicle and trailer. So there are no signs that go up specific to vehicle and trailer. I'm not-
For, for the right-of-way area specifically, it would be general parking. That could be used for both vehicle and trailer or cars.
Correct.
Without the wildlife area, there's no specifically designated trailer and vehicle parking. So we wouldn't need, well, we would just eliminate those from the table until, um, Mr. Hewitt gets any for the clarification. But we can work with, you know, town staff based on what's ready and get that into my, my schedule.
Well, I, I have a question on that. If, if somebody parks a boat and a trailer in the right-of-way and they're taking up two spaces, how much are they paying for?
They have to pay for each vehicle.
Okay.
Each tag.
Two tags.
Most tags on boat trailers, boat trailers, most boat trailers don't get tagged for one reason or another. So what do you do then?
In some states, you don't have to tag them, but-
Yeah, in South Carolina, but, I mean, it's gonna be a-
That's gonna be the exception basis to what, you know, clerk and chief and lieutenant, uh-
Figure it out.
No, it's, it's just, it's just a little, you want to encourage you a little-
Yeah, it's-
We're working on it.
It'll be a workout, this, you know, you, you're several little friends, they're gonna take a little time with them. Just one up.
It'll work out.
Any other questions on the signs?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk, help me out, we, my recollection is we have a motion, did we ever have a second?
No, but can we clarify in the motion that the approving of the ordinance is with the changes discussed? Cause I don't want to, you have to approve with the changes, but no, we do not have to.
The ordinance is with the changes that we made during the meeting this evening, yes.
Now I'm looking for a second, is that correct? Mr. Brown made a second, so now discussion.
And we specified May first start, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question for the attorney. Are you comfortable with us being ready? Have we satisfied, as far as you know, everything that the state of North Carolina requires us as a town to satisfy to be able to do this?
Do you support the parking? Yes. There's one area that, uh, the town may have satisfied, but I would want to make a question look at.
I'm gonna make sure that the town is eighty-eight compliant as far as the handicap spaces. And, um, you know, Jim, I want to work with you on that, Jeremy, and the lady that, uh, had received a lot of emails from, can't recall her name right now.
Martha?
Yeah, um, I'm gonna call her tomorrow and, uh, bring her in on this. She clearly has some expertise. I don't, but I suspect if I talk to her, I'll have much more expertise. But I, at this point, yes, we're, we're compliant to the, to the point where I think we get a hundred percent satisfaction. Quite. I mean, it's, it's the right thing to do, but aside from that, I've always worked with the philosophy of you can avoid a lawsuit at minimal cost and do that because that involved over the years in some huge, expensive lawsuits that honestly settled out after thousands and thousands of dollars in earnings fees that we spent. And, uh, I think this one here, uh, is one that we can satisfy, be okay, and avoid any kind of future lawsuit. So that's where I am.
Next question for Auto Connect, are, are you confident that you can meet these deadlines, is it gonna be obviously necessitated?
Given the, the amount of work that we've done with the town, with staff, police department, yes, absolutely. We have materials lined up for signs that can be ready in about a week and a half. We have staff lined up to install signs, it'll take a week or two after that. The discussion that I have with Mr. Hewitt, uh, around an April first, uh, May first start. Either way, it's fine with me, we can start. Uh, it will take us about, usually it takes us about two weeks from signing the contract to release the app itself with, in town, open in this case. We are currently on track to release that app towards the end of next week. We have arranged for my staff to be here on Saturdays, uh, over at Greenview Park. And publicize that we are there to help people, so we're ready to do that and do that in the next coming weeks for anybody that needs help with the app, or doesn't have a credit card and wants to pay with a check, or just generally wants to come and ask us questions. So whenever the town is ready, uh, we are ready to go.
Is there any communications planned, newspaper, radio, TV, any of that?
We're discussing that next, communication plan.
Good.
Hold my comment until the next gotten, that's a section.
Mr. Hewitt, who, who in, from the town is gonna work with Auto Connect to verify and make sure that the sign's in the right place and so forth?
It's gonna be a combined effort between the police department and Public Works.
Yeah, we're very dependent on both the police department and Public Works to make sure that that is done correctly.
We need to talk about the communication included in the-
How many attendants are you hiring, are you advertising locally? How's that working?
I'm sorry?
Attendants, the parking attendants.
Yeah, I will, I'm ready. We've got the job applications, the job notification, the job description is ready to go on for local distribution here as soon as we get through.
All right, any more discussion, are you ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pardon, say nay. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Can we please, I, I'd like to discuss specifics and then, you know, get the actions in place for items that have to be produced for the paid parking rollout to happen efficiently and get the word to the right people. In the RFP, responsibilities of the town, it was, uh, general community notices for awareness with Auto Connect assistance.
Correct.
Okay? But I'm also, I look at this as, this is aimed at the staff as well, that, you know, we've had a lot of people asking about, is there gonna be an FAQ come out on the website that, you know, gives people answers to frequently asked questions? And then, of course, there has to be, there has to be, um, a nice, easily found page that, you know, lists the dates, that gives the information of, you know, the, the when, the how much does it cost? How do I do this? And the table of where the parking is and a map. So all of these items need to be done, and they need to be done sooner than later. And people who are going to want to buy a season pass, of course, need to understand how to do that earlier than later as well.
Great, we do.
Go.
So starting, for starters, I've had over twenty inquiries from local people wanting to buy their, in the form of a map. We obviously couldn't do that until we had the decision for the form of the contract. We will be ready in about two weeks to do that. Back about, maybe Mr. Hewitt will notice, uh, we published a Eagle Beach Parking, How Will It Work document in one of our communications. We have updated that with the information that you just approved, and I have copies here, or would you? I apologize, the print is small. This provides the basics, um, for several things. One is, provides handouts, it provides information that can be posted on the town website. The only pieces that are not in this are the specific parking areas which have been approved and some adjustments we've discussed already tonight. We have flyers, um, already been printed. We will distribute those to, um, the town hall, to local establishments, restaurants, any place that they've got local information. We will have people here on the weekends, particularly on Saturdays. Instead of starting on the nineteenth of March, we'll now start, you know, probably in early April. So that we can be ready for that May first, uh, start. We can have all the signs up ahead of time, um, and just cover them over. Say a plastic bag, a plastic bag. And then come around and take them all off on April thirtieth. So that they're ready to go on the first. That also gives me more time to hire people and get them trained. So, but we have several people that will be looked down here to do that. If the town wants to do outside media besides Facebook pages, um, community stuff, I am open to helping with that. A lot of the same material would be used for that communication as well.
Was the town planning on doing anything with Facebook or any alternatives to just the website?
What we do in Facebook, we've got Instagram, we have our email blast, so all of our programs will be used when we're putting out the information here.
Heather, David, do you think it's, would be worthwhile to put it in the, the local newspaper?
You guys will like it.
I don't think that's a fair, a very expensive deal, but it would give the local, uh, folks that don't use that media to, uh, possibly see that, or make sure that the, our television stations, I feel sure they'll be interested in what's going on, and we can give them the information.
They're actually subscribed to our blast, so that's why they get a lot of our information. So they decide what you know to run. If you guys want it in the paper, it's up to you, but you, I don't know if you want the Beacon or the, I, I don't know where you'd want us to actually do that.
Well, the, the papers that people read here, the Beacon and, uh, Port City.
Sure.
No, they don't, uh, well, but Beacon and the Port City definitely are local papers that, that people read. I, I would recommend it, I would recommend putting it in as a heads up.
My, my recommendation is more is better.
A couple, just the last couple weeks before, the last couple weeks of April, um, those, those papers only come out once a week, you know? Have it in there the last two weeks of April that, that hopefully-
I think that would be a plenty.
Need some clarification. Um, is what you're talking about an advertisement, or are you talking about the issue of a press release? Which is most of the time the customary way of providing information to media outlets through a press release.
Press release, yeah. And, uh, David, are, are you gonna do the flyer and do the usual, fold it up and put it in the water bill so that property owners got it, so it'll go in?
Yeah, we'll probably use that fact sheet or something like that.
Yeah, that's, and it'll go in the April water bill? Okay.
Perfect.
And what about an FAQ on the website?
We'd, we'd use that.
You'll use, you'll just use this?
I would, I would recommend just use this.
Just use this?
Remember, standardization, standardization is key when communicating-
Yeah.
Those types of things.
Okay. I have one other thing that, that I've still had a lot of people asking me. During, once we start this, and your people are going to be doing the enforcement, how do they communicate, how do they communicate to Auto Connect when they see people illegally parked? And I know the police chief said, you call nine-one-one. I have a lot of owners who don't, don't want to call nine-one-one during the summer season because you're just adding to the burden of what should be calls for real emergencies.
People can call us anytime. Our number is on here, we answer it during the day in particular, from nine to five.
Of course, it would only be during the day, we're only talking the nine to five.
Nine to five is, is our normal hours, we usually answer the phones until much later than that. But if they see something, all they have to do is call us, our number is everywhere. So I'm here like four times.
Yeah. That's just something, again, I've had a lot of people asking me because-
They can feel free and we will, you know-
Try to get the message.
Free up somebody, we'll try to go and investigate ourselves. If it's something that is beyond our capability, then that's when we get the police department.
Well, the tenants you hire, they'll be marked, will they be wearing a uniform and they'll be clearly visible?
My team generally wears a, what do they call it, safety green t-shirts, clearly marked with surpassed parking support on it. I like to call it highlighter yellow.
Right, so people will be able to see them and communicate with them if they need to.
So if, if anybody sees one of those people- So if, if anybody sees one of those people, flag us down. We spend, in the other towns that we service, we spend about fifty percent of our time, almost fifty percent of time, helping people out, either with, you know, finding the right zone, getting the right payment. They got a ticket after they pay, well, it was because they did something. And we can help fix that. So we spend most of our time doing that, and then the rest of the time we do scanning all the parking lots, all the side streets, et cetera. But we, we really work with my team and make sure that they are visible, helpful, courteous, all those good things that we talked about in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on communication?
Thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, do we need to make any motions or anything to...
I think I've got plenty of input, and it's clear on what we need to do, 'cause that's the consensus of the board.
Yes, sir. Thank you, David.
I'd like to make a comment in regards to the staff that you're about to hire. I know this goes without saying, but Holden Beach is a family beach. We enjoy a pretty good reputation for holding out a hand of welcome to those that come and visit. And I'm, and I'm sure that the people that you hire will be very much programmed to be friendly, tolerant, get their job done, but we love these people that live here and that visit us. We don't want to be the Nazi patrol out there giving out tickets.
We are part of the community, we represent you.
Yeah.
So we intend to be very cognizant of that. So, good reminder, but that's one of our hallmarks, is making sure that we represent the community and keep them in here.
Well, I'm gonna say something I probably shouldn't say, but in behalf of my commissioners and our staff, and me especially, I'm pretty easy to get a hold of in these people here that have been elected. We're the ones that are gonna get yelled at, and if we get yelled at, guess who we're gonna yell at? We're gonna come get you. So, please keep that in mind, because we don't want to lose our good reputation.
Comes back to me, I guess.
Right. Thank you for about, for what you're about to do. Ms. Pat, are we through with nine F?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, we're going to number ten on the agenda. Ms. Ferguson, our Assistant Town Manager.
Yes, sir. And I need to take a moment and call our bond attorney and our financial advisor on the phone with the board to take that, so that we can introduce my question.
Hey, Andrew, it's Christie, you wanna ask God, you know, hey? Hey, Scott, am I added to the line, okay? Okay, you're now on speakerphone, do we have everybody? Can you guys hear me?
I can, I can barely hear you, Christie.
Can you hear me now?
It's a little better.
Yeah. How about now?
Yep, I heard that.
Okay, so what you guys have before you tonight is the pier property financing contract and resolution. You have three documents there, the installment financing contract, the deed of trust, resolution twenty-two oh five, which the board would need to improve regarding installment financing and other related matters as outlined in the resolution in order to move forward with the installment financing, financing to purchase the property at 441 Ocean Boulevard West, and the wire transfer agreement that outlines those terms. If you guys have specific questions, Andrew Carter with Doug Carter and Associates and Scott Leo with Parker Poe are on the line.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. In Article Six, on page eleven of your, page eleven as numbered in your document, which would be page seventy-seven in our package for the townspeople, it's talking about the town maintaining insurance, and there is a statement made, including national flood insurance and an amount acceptable to the bank. Is, is that, can that be more precisely described to us? Is that specific to the building, or are there other elements of the property?
I'll speak to that. The NFIP in this case is only gonna apply to the structures on the property, not the pier, not to the land, so that's the only thing that it'll apply to.
Okay, thank you. And then, one other thing, there was a comment about on page, um, page, page one hundred and one of the packet for, for us, and this is in the Parker Poe draft letter, page six. It talks about, it talks about the, the town needing to get bank approval for leases. And I just wanted to know what the procedure for that is, is gonna be? Is that just a simple case of when we, when we have leases that we're in the process of obtaining, we simply have to give them to the bank? It's not that the bank has to look at, at what we're, what we're, what we're putting out for, as I would say?
That's my understanding, but I defer to the bond counsel.
Yeah, that's, that's right. I think they just, since that, so you'll notice, one of the changes we made was to carve out the improvements, so it doesn't apply, for example, to the, you know, to the building, 'cause we know, you know, we know that there's gonna be stuff happening there. The collateral really is just the land, so they really would want to know about what's happening, you know, on that, on that collateral that they care about. So that, that really is it. It's a matter of just informing the bank of what you're doing and showing them, showing them that.
Okay, thank you.
Any more commissioners with questions? Mr. Attorney, are you satisfied with the way things are in paperwork, Mr. Hewitt? The state is, is in agreement, legal counsel's in agreement, staff's in agreement, and the lenders are in agreement. Is that where we are? Any more questions or discussions? If not, is there a motion you wanna pursue or not?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash oh five, to approve installment, installment financing with a closing date of March the twenty-eighth, the nineteen, twenty twenty-two.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pardon, say no. It's unanimous vote, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
You still have the floor, ma'am?
Yes, sir. So, in the April timeframe of last year, we submitted a preliminary application to DCM regarding the fifty-foot lot for the pier property. It was for the fifty-foot lot portion only. We got selected, and we did the follow-up final application, which was due in August. It takes them time to review that. We did receive word that we have been approved for the grant in the amount of a hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. If the board would like to move forward, there's a suggested motion at the bottom of your agenda packet, page, page one twenty-two.
And we're on item number eleven on the agenda.
Christie, is that, is, are there any, the grant is gonna be sometime soon, receiving the funds, or do they give any time or date?
They did not give an indication on that, but it will probab, I mean, it will have to be after the purchase is finalized.
Yes, ma'am.
And this is for the walkway portion of that?
This is just for the lot, where the public access is gonna be.
Okay.
And I'd like to make a motion to enter the contract with the Division of Coastal Management and authorize David to execute the contract.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pardon, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you.
We're on number twelve on the agenda. Ms. Pat?
Well, at the last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you had highlighted that you wanted to understand from the town attorney whether or not proposed use for seven ninety-six Ocean Boulevard West was in compliance with the town ordinances because you had concern about an ordinance related to clubhouses on Holden Beach. So I put it on the agenda so that we would have an answer from the town attorney, whether or not there is a concern.
The mayor had suggested it as a community center. So, am I correct?
My recollection is that it came up in a discussion of the possible uses, and that was one of the possible uses. And my concern was, in the past, we had some major issues with community buildings, properties that were being dedicated to the use of subdivisions from the mainland, having hundreds of lots, and they'd come over and buy a fifty or a hundred by hundred lot and put a place on it, and all those people trying to come to one site. So that, my concern was, is make sure that the rules and regulations that were put in place to prevent that kind of gathering in a residential neighborhood, I didn't know whether that would be impacted by that potential use that was being discussed.
Well, you know, with the...
Does it have to be commercial property?
...permitted in the traditional uses. It, basically, it's a facility of activity and material consistency for governmental operations, and that would fall within that category. Clubhouses, there's only one permitted use of, of Article Six, whereas grounds and facilities for public recreation facilities such as community center building, parks, playgrounds, tennis courts, and similar facilities operated by the town, permitted uses are allowed under all six categories. So, I'm not sure, I hadn't understood that it was... My understanding was that it would need to be used, a possible use for, as a community center. Is that correct? Not as a clubhouse, per se.
You're the legal man, not me. I, I just raised the question.
Well...
I don't wanna...
So, the clubhouses are considered like private use just by that potential residential neighborhood, whereas a community center is for the town municipality.
Exactly. I mean, I think the mayor's, or mayor's point is, well, take it, because some of the off-site residential developments have beach houses. I don't think it was anticipated that this property would turn into something like that because it would be for town residents, you know, to use, or organizations to use, but not where it's, you know, if it's an off-site development, one down the street from me, what could say that? It's one of the more, I can't use that house, I'm not a DOA member there, but it seems to me that different town function could use this house. Another thing I looked at is when the property was deeded to the town, it's deeded September eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, there is just a standard reference in there that the property is subject to follow-up exceptions, which is applicable zoning, land use ordinance, statutes, and regulations, and ad valorem taxes, and all applicable restrictive covenants and utility use whatsoever. So, this is a development called Green Harbor Subdivision. So, there are no restrictive covenants associated with that subdivision, so it's not a, if there were restricted covenants, which you normally would see, you could not use it for community purposes, restricted to residential purpose, but this one is not. So, I think, you know, of course, it's up to the town to decide, but zoning doesn't provide it, restricted covenants don't exist, so it's entirely up to the board as to what doggone usage could be of that property. Sorry, I can't help you out better than that.
I don't have a dog in the fight, but I'm just trying to prevent an argument coming later.
Yeah, I can remember when the clubhouses were established, that they had to be established in a commercial area, and that's, 'cause there's a couple they tried, and they weren't commercially removed, if my amendment serves the correction.
All right.
It's clear?
Okay. All right, we ready to move on? Number thirteen? McRaney? Is that where we are, Mr. Hewitt?
Mr. McRaney, yes, sir.
Yeah, so with the rapid nature of all the new construction, the revenues for the system development fees have exceeded projections, and these fees are collected and moved to the Capital Reserve Fund to help pay for cost incurred, increased sewer capacity, and staff is asking that the board approves the amendment to transfer this money from the Capital Reserve Fund to the Water Sewer Fund to purchase valve pits that will expand the service to new homes.
Well, is this, it was this, you know, is this for, because of the rapid growth we're seeing right now? We, we need these to have them in stock to be ready to, to use when the houses are ready?
Yeah, with, with the supply chain backups and just everything going on.
So this is covenants to be ready for future growth?
Second. All right, post in the second, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pardon, say no. It's unanimous vote, Madam Clerk. Public comments on anything you wanna talk about? If you wanna talk about anything, you'll be recognized, come to the podium, give us your name and address. Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am, we just want to enjoy your presence right here. Yes, ma'am, we just want to enjoy your presence right here.
Hi, my name is Sally Caldwell at 121 South Shore, and this is just a general question about the house that burned down. Is there any information when it's going to be taken away? Because every time I go by, it looks like it's collapsed a little more.
Mr. Hewitt, or Chief, or Mr. Evans?
So that, it's been, yeah, it's been handed over to the insurance company?
Yeah.
And that's up to them to settle, and whenever they do that, include the property. It's, it's in the hands of the insurance company on, on the property.
How about the safety?
They, they were supposed to, now, last I saw, that's my, they have some interest in passing, so the, the insurance company did it, but again, it's, you know, it's their property, their private property. I, I know it's not really a good answer.
Well, I, I was just wondering, yeah. Okay, and then I have one other question. In Brunswick Beacon, on February 17th, there was a letter written, and it was written by a man named Keith Smith, but the commissioner, picture and name was on that, but he did not write that letter. It was Keith Smith that wrote that letter.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think Brunswick Beacon had been informed, but they have not made any corrections.
Well, I, I called the Beacon shortly thereafter because I got several phone calls, and, uh, of course, they said, well, did you change your name? And then I got a call from Keith, who said, I'm now a commissioner. So, uh, but I did ask them for a correction, and I've looked at the Beacon closely for the past two weeks and have not seen one. But, uh, that was, uh, correct. Keith Smith wrote the article, and, uh, they just, the lady said she just put my picture on it by mistake. Thank you, Ms. Caldwell.
Uh, good evening. I'm Irvin Woods, own at 289 Ocean Boulevard East, little section I'll call Isolated OBE, and we'd like to keep it that way. Uh, fire department and police were in my neighborhood a couple of days ago, and, and I took the picture that I've been wanting to stage, and I didn't even have to do it myself. I got a fire truck blocking more than half of the road, and another truck there, just a clear example of why y'all made the right decision by not doing any parking along that street. Um, I wanna thank the commission and the staff for the years of looking out for, um, the efforts on the east end. Um, the Lockwood Folly Wadener project is underway. Uh, it's coming just in time because the nor'easters we've had over the last three or four months have done a good bit of damage in a very isolated section. Uh, and I've owned in the east end for 20 years, watched the sand come and go. Normally, Amazing Grace is one of the first places that looks like it's gonna fall in the ocean. A month ago, two weeks ago, Amazing Grace had plenty of dry sand out in front, but we had severe wa- erosion from about the A-frame at the public parking lot to Av- going, going west to Avenue B. We lost all of the sand fencing in that one little section, and I've owned there for 20 years, and, and that, it's unusual for it to wash there. But, uh, the sand is coming in, we're not quite there, but it's already flowing down. We haven't lost any vegetation in the last three and a half weeks that I've been down here. Uh, one thing, one request I have is that since that two-block section appears to be the only part of the beach that I've been on where the sand fences were washed out, uh, I would request that in addition to, or, um, along with, or before, or immediately after, when the 2,500 sections of sand fence that's in the, uh, sand fence proposal that I looked at, um, in, in the, uh, request for proposals, I request that in that roughly two-block section, that y'all come in, replace that section that was removed by the erosion, so they would be actually doubled up there as opposed to going down the entire beach, swooping in where the erosion wasn't, coming back out. It's only about a two-block section. Uh, I'm sure that all the new development on the east end is, uh, is doing more to pay our fair share down there than we used to when it really was isolated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Um, Marty Arrowood, 114 Shrimp Street, East End. I'm here to thank you tremendously, the board, the policemen, Officer Dilworth, for all your due diligence and trying to look out for us down there. The, um, street signs, the layout of the street signs, the concern for the, the management. I don't think anybody on this island had any intention to keep mainlanders off the island or any kind of ill will for anybody. We just need to manage things. And I've been here 33 years, and I just wanna thank you for giving us our neighborhood back. Because from what we can see, we're gonna have our neighborhoods again. Our kids can ride our bikes on Saturdays or whatever, so I wanna thank you tremendously for that. I also wanna thank you for your due diligence. I don't call it the pier property, I call it the oceanfront property at 441. I think you've done a great thing to maintain some green space, open space for the homeowners and the islanders in trying to obtain that land, and I wanna thank you very much for that. Ms. Pat, I had a long talk about three years ago with the head of 911, because being on the east end, we had some real concerns with parking and people using showers they shouldn't be using. He told me at that point, don't worry one bit about calling 911 on a Saturday. That was part of their job. Don't ever think that somebody cussing you out or a car parked in the wrong place is not an emergency, 'cause it is for you at that time. So he said, that's what, the, since we don't have a permanent person in our police station all the time, that that's what 911 is all about. So, if you can't get Varna Auto Connect, they told me three years ago, call them, they'll help us get it straightened out, and usually whatever officer's on the beach is there very quickly to help us out. So, again, thank you for everything you've done. I know some people aren't happy, but those of us in LS Holden subdivision are extremely happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? About anything you wanna speak about? Oh...
I'm gonna take just a second, 'cause it, something came to my mind when she said that. Um, she brought up the, the 911 thing, and, and it's been mentioned here a couple of times. With us integrated with the CAD system now, when we, if, if somebody calls the office, when we go in and start typing a call into the computer, as we do, we put everything in there, as soon as we put the call in, 911 center gets a notification, and, and they do what's, they, they check on us. They'll, so if Frank puts a call on the radio or in the computer, they're gonna call him on the radio and ask him if he's okay, and he has to give them a certain 10 code that lets him know he's okay, he's not in a bind. Um, but, but, so there's still that radio communication. So whether you call them or call us, we're still having that communication. So I promise you, we're not putting them out by, by calling them. And I just wanna mention that with the new CAD system, so the ki- the community kinda understood what was going on, whether we put the call in or whether the dispatchers put the call in, we're still having that communication, so. It's, if, if you can't get us, and, and we do have somebody in the office now, but it's Monday through Friday, you know, the normal business hour, so if you have to get up with us after hours, still call the 911 center. Um, you know, we're still having that communication, so, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, we're gonna move on to number 15.
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, Jim Keever, 123 Lumberston. Uh, will the traffic pattern on the bridge, April through October, be the same, or will it just a right turn normally? Will it be a right turn through April, October? Or how, how will the traffic pattern be? 'Cause particularly on Saturdays, might take it for everything.
So, to answer that question, um, I found it to be successful last year, in my personal opinion. We have not come to a final decision on that for this year. Uh, it is something that staff and I have talked about a little bit, so, um, we still need to discuss it further with the town manager and make sure we're all on the same page, talk to the fire department. So it's, it's an option that we are considering, but I, I can't say right now whether it'll be in stone yet or not.
I'll try to look a little closer in the audience. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? All right, we're gonna move to number 15, Town Manager's Report.
Yes, sir. Just a few items tonight. Wanted to, uh, report that the FEMA Storm Damage Repair Project is right at two-thirds of the way complete with approximately 1,100,000 cubic yards placed on the beach so far. Uh, we anticipate an on-time completion now that both dredges, um, are almost back in operation. The RN Weeks, after, uh, having its repairs done at the dry dock in Norfolk, has returned and is pumping eastward toward the berm at 3:30 Ocean Boulevard West. Once we get the tie-in made there, at, um, the subline will be repositioned and the sand will begin to be pumped west. The Lynn Home, uh, tagged out for the, for a couple of days over the weekend, they had to get fuel and, uh, performed some maintenance. Uh, it's scheduled to return today. It may have already gotten here, but certainly by, uh, before midnight tonight, and it'll resume operations at Subline Three, with the Weeks moving on to Subline Four, which is west of the pier. Uh, to the Lockwood Folly Inlet Crossing Navigation Maintenance Project, that's a core sponsored project that, uh, the town, the county, and the state fund, that is due to place, to place about 210,000 cubic yards of beach compatible sand, uh, on the east end. It began last week, and, uh, believe that the April closing, uh, is proceeding well, um, but I wanna qualify that the environmental window closes in April, that may impact completion of that project. It's gonna be tight, but, uh, Southwind is the dredging company, and they're, they're working hard to, to get that completed on time. Uh, per the board's direction, the wetland delineation and clearing, uh, as needed for the surveyors is underway at 812 and 764 Ocean Boulevard West, uh, in it, uh, and the Marsh Streets, that is, uh, Selfish, Swordfish, Sand Dollar, Scotch Bonnet, and Greensboro. Uh, to the Seagull Street paving, we've got the bid package going out, uh, next Tuesday. Scheduled bid opening is March the 29th, with a, uh, buffer of a couple of weeks there in case that the bids aren't responsive, uh, with the intent to award at the commissioners' meeting, uh, in April. Anticipate that we will have, uh, paving occur before Memorial Day, as we've done in the past several years. That's all I have tonight.
Any questions, commissioners?
Yeah, David, is there going to be any chance that we will be able to bring the Marsh Streets into the parking program sometime in the near future, or do we need to anticipate that it's not gonna be possible this year? I'm not talking about the lots in the 800, 700, I'm talking about the Marsh Street.
Um, I believe that the commissioners wanted to defer that until we saw what the delineation was going to be, so probably be, I'd be remiss in venturing a guess until we see what that delineation is. So, I don't know.
I mean, the tags are out there. What, what's the next step?
Right, but we wanna make sure that, that delineation is mapped, and that, that we have something to hang our hat on that ties it directly to an ordinance form.
Right, so what, what's the next step?
Well, we've, we've, uh, it's underway. The, uh, Land Management Group, uh, has been contracted, they've gone out there and walked the line, and so now they're preparing a report. It's got to be verified by KAMA and the Corps of Engineers, and that is, that, that is not controlled, their timeframes aren't, uh, as, as easily controlled as, uh, as the one for our contractor. So, I, I think I'm still about to, I don't know.
Okay.
We're at their mercy, that's what I'm trying to say. Any more questions of Mr. Hewitt? Hearing none. Um, the mayor's comments are brief. In my entire life, I've never seen as much positive activity improving our oceanfront and our inlet areas, and it's exciting to see all this happening, and, uh, I'm sure the rest of you in the room are as pleased as I am, 'cause it's gonna be a wonderful thing when we get through this. So, thanks to all the staff and everyone associated with that. The, uh, spring is here, almost, and, uh, that's exciting. Yeah, that's right, got a cold spell coming on, but it sure is exciting to see the flowers blooming and the trees blossoming and all that. I'm, I'm happy for it. And, uh, anyway, Mr. Smith, Mayor Proten?
Yeah, I've got a, a few comments. It was a pleasure to get to work with, uh, the mayor and our town manager at the LGC meeting. Uh, we got to, uh, work with Mr. Falwell and, uh, Sharon Edmondson. They worked with us really closely, uh, when we, we got there, I got there early, and we had conversations, and when we, uh, got in front of them, they, uh, seemed to, to move right along. They were very knowledgeable of what we wanted and, and what, what the circumstances were. Uh, we also, I'd like to thank, uh, our local representative for North Carolina District 19, Mr. Charlie Miller. He wrote a really nice letter of support to the LGC, and that was, uh, awfully kind of him to assist us with, uh, his input, as well as one of our sen- senator, uh, Mr. Tom McGuinness. So it was, uh, we had, we had a lot of, uh, support going into the, uh, Local Government Commission meeting, uh, and I'd also would like to thank my person that was underneath my picture, Keith Smith, uh, for his efforts in, uh, putting in, putting, uh, out a, basically a survey on, uh, the, save the Holden Beach Pier, and before we went into the meeting at the LGC on Tuesday, there were nearly 800 supporters. So it was a, it was, it was a good meeting, and as we left, uh, they took a break because they spent quite a bit of time with us, and, uh, I heard the, I heard the, uh, our treasurer say, Mr. Falwell, he said it was, uh, it seemed to be an important thing for the future of Holden Beach, Brunswick County, and the state of North Carolina. So it was a unanimous vote by the Local Government Commission, and we really did, uh, appreciate their support. I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for all their help and support, and over the past few months, we've had some pretty tough meetings, but everybody's kinda stuck together. I feel like we've got a real good working, uh, group of commissioners at this point. Uh, and I'd like to thank Jeremy and Frank for their assistance with the parking program. You guys have put a lot of effort into that and kept us in line and made sure that we, uh, could, uh, work with Jim and make sure that it's gonna start out as, as closely as to, best as we possibly can to start. This wheel, I feel sure, uh, will need some adjustment as we move along, but that's, uh, Jim's told us that is, we can make adjustments, and, uh, with the recommendation from people in the, in the town Holden Beach. Uh, as always, I'd like to thank the staff, Christie and Heather, you, the, the staff works really hard, uh, they, you do us a great job, and I really appreciate the work on the grant, getting that done for us, and all the other stuff on the funding, and thanks, Tim, uh, for your help in that, uh, in that area too. And I'd like to thank everybody here for joining us this evening, and I hope to see y'all again soon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brown?
Short and sweet. Thanks, thanks to everybody, and Rick, to Mr. Frank, to Mr. Tim, to all our hard-working employees. Jared, thanks for what you do. And Mr. Auto Connect there, we just hope we have, it turned out to be a really good working establishment here, and we look forward to, to moving the town along with that. And, uh, so, we just wanna thank everybody for being out tonight, and you see your government at work. You know, it, it's, it's not always real easy, okay? And there's been a lot of nights there, we've been off a little turning in the bed, and, uh, that's part of, you know, that, that's part of the work. That's part of it. We're trying to steer things not tomorrow, but in fifteen, twenty years' time. To do that, you know, it takes a little creativity. So we hope that things will work out, and I'm glad we're kind of settling in with the pier. We've got a couple of other things coming up that we're going to really need to work on, and hopefully everything is coming to get to the goals to keep Holden Beach growing, and to keep it a nice family beach. That's our, that's our main goal. That's why the people come and visit, that's why they all live here, and if you want to see that, you can have a good view.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Murdock?
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. As usual, want to thank all the staff. I think we're all working together. That doesn't happen a whole lot, it seems to, that somebody's all at odds at some point, but this, this has been a pretty good, pretty good six months with the things that we've had to face. Hopefully the parking, guys, this will put a little organization to an issue that had none. It was a free-for-all over here for years, and hopefully this will straighten most of that out. I do want to point out, though, and I'm going to say it again, everybody on this island and everybody that can hear me talking right now, we need boat and trailer parking desperately. We are trying to work with the wildlife to improve that, but as of right now, we're in a terrible situation with that portion of parking. And we just don't have any place to put them. So I would like for people that have boats and trailers, and, you know, we all pay, pay our registrations and our licenses and everything to fish out there, and they get the money to make the calls to the county, to the wildlife, to some organization, that we're in dire straits here as far as parking for a boat ramp in this area. And the people are going to still try to do this, and I don't know how that's going to work out, but I guess we'll address that as it arises. Moving on from that, I'm extremely, extremely grateful to this board for keeping six or seven condos from going up in the middle of this island, and preserving this property at all costs for the residents of the town and the public in general, and hopefully it's a place that will make everybody proud in the long run. We can improve it, and hopefully, you know, my, my dream would be to see a brand-new pier sitting there, albeit might be out of the question, but if we could just make it better than what it is and keep it accessible to the public, we'll get a brand-new access there, we'll preserve those parking spaces for the many people that use it. And unfortunately, there was a high price to pay for it, and we are all aware of that up here, but things come at a cost, and if nobody's seeing that right now with everything out there, from groceries to gas to, you know, the world's in a lot worse shape than we are at Holden Beach right now, thankfully. And we need to keep that in mind, and we need to keep the entire country and the world in our prayers, because there's a lot of bad stuff going on out there. And this is still a place we can be proud of and enjoy as, as long as we can, so we don't need to take it for granted. And I appreciate everybody on the staff tremendously for all the hard work over the last six months. It's been a, it's been a long time coming, and I'm glad, for me, for one, that some of it has finally come to an end. So, and thanks, everybody, for your support, and we, we hope we've done the right thing here. So that's it. Y'all have a good evening.
Dr. Dyer?
As a newest member, it's been a rough start. It's been a tough couple of months, I didn't anticipate, but I think the previous work of the board and the staff, I think we've worked hard, this county's growing tremendously fast. It's driving around as my job takes me, seeing all the houses going up, there's growth everywhere. I think the growing pains that we're experiencing here, trying to keep this a family beach and keep up, you know, with the growing, I think we're doing a good job of trying to keep some green space, trying to control the parking so that some of these neighborhoods aren't overrun, and I think we're moving in the positive direction now, and I appreciate everybody's hard work and help. And just ask the community to be patient with, I think we're moving in the positive direction, as Brian says, but there's going to be some aches and pains when we roll out the parking, just be patient. I think ITO's worked with us this far, they're going to continue to help us out, and I think there's going to be some great, great ideas and things coming out of the property over there by the pier, and I think we'll continue to move forward in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. And Ms. Pat?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming. It's been so refreshing to actually see people that have friendly faces. It's been, it's been a wild several months with the comments. I'm glad to be back to the people who like to come and just sit and listen and see what we're doing and, and sort of, you know, be supportive. I understand what's happened that made it so controversial, but God, having a calm day was really nice, I have to say. I echo the, thanks to the staff. You guys, the last few months, have really done a great job getting us to where we are. I am so happy that now we can move forward with, instead of arguing about what are we going to do to get property, now it's the fun part of planning and budgeting for how we're going to improve it and how we're going to use it. This is going to be the exciting part. The hard stuff, the hardest stuff should be behind us. So, yeah, watch out for how the parking comes together. I, I think, you know, it'll roll out, it'll be, it'll be interesting to watch the first couple of months, but with our big wide beach, this is the best year to do this. We're going to have a lot of people come, because we've got the best beach in Brunswick being built right now. And so if ever there was a year to have a coherent parking plan, this is the year to start it. And again, the pier, I'm, I'm happy we've got the parking, I'm happy we've got a building that we can have amenities, that we can develop to be something for restrooms, restaurants, et cetera. And I am sure that within a few years, that property is going to be something that we're all proud of.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, we've got an executive session?
I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session.
Madam Chair?
Yes, you go first. Executive session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181186 to discuss qualifications, competence, performance of a public employee, and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 1433181185, instruct the staff re-aging concerning the negotiation of a pricing term of a contract concerning the acquisition of go property.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Both say nay. Thank you all. Any further business come forward to board? Not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Brian, you made the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.